All right, good morning, everybody. Nice to be in here with us today for our workshop Tuesday, July eighteenth. And first off, we get to leave first.
Yeah, we got it.
We're good. First off, I want to start out by thanking everyone that made the meeting possible yesterday. Bill Hart, you and your maintenance staff, fantastic job of being, I know you had three rooms you had to set up, the chairs, hospitality, everything was perfect. Fortunately, I guess, we didn't have to be here long. You know, I hope they do come to an agreement. I think Mauro feels the same way that rather than us do a mandate on somebody or rather than us make a decision that's going to negatively affect a lot of people, if they can come to an agreement peacefully themselves, I think that's what's in the best interest of Tremble County regarding that. I do feel bad for the people that took off work to be here, that wanted their chance to express their views. Those same citizens now will have a chance to express their views to their township or their city and work through the process that way. I mean, there's really, when you looked at the annexation from all the research and stuff that I saw, there wasn't really much flexibility for us unless we got political, unless we bent and squeezed and stuck things in one way or another to do the right thing. We just had to follow the law and we were kind of really limited on what people would expect from us. So my heart goes out to those people, both sides. I know there's a lot of passion, a lot of stress on those families that live in those neighborhoods or in that neighborhood, I should say, but hopefully they come to a nice peaceful resolution that makes everybody happy. And Howland wins, Niles wins, New Development wins, City wins. And I think they're on the path to that, the way it sounds. Secondly, the fair, again, Bill Hart, can't stress enough, you're like the king of the fair. We should have had you on a float and put you up and down the midway.
No.
Because your guys, it helped out tremendously with the fair board. Every fair board member that I saw was extremely excited. And we even got Mauro to go and part with some of his commissioner money, donate to four H, buy a nice cheese basket.
There you go.
And I think the wife is, yeah, you get chickens too. You get news back today?
I am.
Yeah, they called me today and said, bring the chickens by, so.
On the line or processed?
But it was awesome. And I don't know, it was my first fair, but from talking to everybody there, the crowd we had Friday was unbelievable. The crowd we had Sunday was unbelievable. And there were people waiting in line for forty-five minutes just to get in the gate. And the vendors all seemed happy. Fair board was most accommodating. They got a great staff out there. They made things go flawlessly. And I can't brag enough about our fair and everyone that made it possible. Our booth, Dawn has the numbers, left them in her office.
Nine hundred and...
Nine hundred and twenty-four visitors to our booth.
Okay, over nine hundred and twenty-four people came into booths with a question or some form of inquiry. These weren't just people walking by that said hello or, you know, kids just grab a piece of candy and go or whatever. These are people, when they came in, they were greeted by the staff. We had full staffing there between the auditor's office and our people. And I noticed while we were there, the county engineer's office had as many as seven people in their booth at a time. And usually they had no less than four people in the booth. The children's services had a full booth of at least four people at all times. The sheriff's department had a bunch of people and they were still short-staffed. And there were some, unfortunately, young kids and stuff, some issues that broke out Saturday and Sunday night. And they didn't have enough officers. They had to have the Zeta and Champion and maybe some other departments there to assist because they were short on manpower with their reserves. But it was all hands on deck for it. And, you know, we had two people at any given time in our booth. So of course, there was a front-page story about people in the booth and about comp time and stuff regarding that. But we did our job. We wouldn't have served a thousand people in this office in that timeframe. We wouldn't serve a thousand people in six months in this office.
And we wouldn't have served a thousand people between the two offices.
Right.
So there were questions answered about the departments under the commissioner as well as things that the auditors are doing. There was information that was given out, even if people didn't necessarily have a long conversation. They took things to start a conversation, to maybe call senior services or call our office to deal with homestead. Or they're made aware of our revaluation and what that process looks like. So I was very happy with the numbers. I was very happy with the conversations I had when I was there.
It clicked for me on Thursday, I believe. And I was sitting there at the booth and Allison's there. And I believe we may have had Chrissy, I'm not sure who the other one was, it might have been you. Anyway.
It's all a blur right now.
It is. A guy came up in a wheelchair with a cowboy hat on.
Yeah, that was.
And he had questions about rides and he wasn't taking advantage of the rides. And you would talk to him and gave him the information, gave him the information for ride share. I mean, this guy was missing out. He was a customer that should have been a customer, that didn't know the process, didn't know, wouldn't have to pay for that, didn't understand any of that. One needed to go to doctor's visits and things like that. And you literally walked this guy through everything he needed to do. And not only him, but he had a son with him that apparently is disabled.
Issues as well, yeah.
And he had issues JFS-wise. And he was talking about assistance. He was talking about getting to a grocery store, getting to a doctor himself. He said that he made calls and nobody called him back. He was calling the wrong numbers, he didn't know where to go. And you even went above and beyond the JFS stuff and talked about Medicare and Medicaid stuff with him. So just that one family, that two people that were helped tremendously because you were in the booth. I couldn't answer that question. We couldn't have had just any volunteer just being there and answering that question. You know, we had a department head, we had Martha there with the homestead exemption stuff. I mean, that was key. And so we literally helped people at the fair and people knew that. And there were people that saw the grand opening and then came in when they heard we were going to be there, said they saw it on the news. There were people that saw the commissioner's meeting and then went over to see what we had and ended up finding some service that could help them. So it was a huge success. I encourage, you know, I'll state, you know, I hope we do it every year. And I hope we do more outreach, not only at the fair, but through the community. That we bring the commissioner's office to them, because there are a lot of people. We are just the people that the big, bad politicians and boss men or whatever live on the top floor of a building in downtown that they have to get to. You know, and we're not those people. We are their neighbors, we are their coworkers, we are the citizens with them. So to get out and expand our reach out to other people, I think is fantastic. And we got good media coverage through the week. I believe that people saw that we were there, saw we were out and about. We had a lot of feedback from other agencies and from other cities. And it was just a good way, even for myself. And I saw Mr. Cannon Lace out there three or four times through the week where we crossed paths, just serving the public, running into people. And again, extending our reach of who we are and what we do. So it was awesome. What else, have any input on that?
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Alex, human resources department.
I want to thank the commissioners sincerely for allowing us to have that opportunity. There is something, I speak magnitude. We are, you know, in offices a lot, right? Especially as we get into more administrative roles as this department has. We do fall in our office setting and we kind of sometimes, I don't want to say we forget, but to be out there and interact with the public again is so invaluable. I mean, you know, we sit in our offices all but one week, right? We're talking about one week here. This week, if I could give every employee, if I could have every employee experience what we experience when we're out there, I think it really reifies and signifies to people why we're public service. I mean, it's invaluable. So thank you, commissioners. And I mean that from the bottom of my heart. It was an invaluable experience. I got to see so many things and people again. And it just ignited my fire for public service again. So thank you.
Martha. I just want to encourage us to maybe, of course, we can give it a little bit more time before we meet, but I think we probably should maybe have the public officials that were represented there as well as maybe some department heads, things like that, to talk about what we want to do next year, talk about what went right, what went wrong this year, and also talk about what we'd like to do next year. So, because I really feel like we did, everything went well, but I feel like we could do a much better job and have a much better presence if we do some planning. I know we talked a little bit with recorded Lutal on that first day about maybe...
So he was there too, okay.
Yeah.
He was remiss and sitting, he was next to us.
About what we could do as far as maybe doing a presence of all the, you know, a county presence, not just separate booths, but maybe either a large tent outside of the grandstand or something within the grandstand that a better, a bigger presence. So people can go to one place and get all the information about the county. And so we maybe want to talk about, Alex, maybe we could, we've got to finish the policy, but maybe when we're done that, since we're already having other public officials meet with us, that might be a good hub for it.
We will next year also. We'll have our command vehicle should be there.
Oh, wow.
And that'll be up and operational there, which will lead me to my next conversation. But that is something, Mr. Hickey was there all week. The health department was there all week in the tent. And they had a huge tent and they took up a little bit of space in it. We had a full exhibits in our area, but we had the whole area across the month that was wide open.
Right.
And that's what generated, I think the idea, Martha, was, you know, if we had tables for each department, even if they weren't manned or staffed, at least they can put their information out. They can showcase what they want to showcase. But there was plenty of room. I mean, it's our fairgrounds. And the fair board works really, really well with us. And I think they would be open to serving citizens at the same time with it. And if they have the space, maybe we can work something out where we have a bigger footprint when people are there.
Yeah, and keeping it together, I think that way if they... And I, you know, I asked, I had people ask me where the health department was the first day. I didn't know where it was. So if we, you know, kind of all work together so that we know where... It was right, it was outside the grandstand.
Well, we weren't out petting the horses, so how would we know?
Yeah.
I mean, we were in the booth working.
Yeah, I spent all my time either at the circle stage or at the booth. That's all, well, and I was at the livestock auction. Those were the three places I was this year. But, and I still managed to get fared out by holiday. But I think, you know, if we just, if we continually worked with other public officials, we all worked together, I think that's helpful. We had tourism stuff, we could, you know, we had some of that there. And that was very popular.
It was.
Big hit.
And the fans, I gotta tell you, Martha, we stole the idea.
[laughing]
For those fans from you, from your campaign. And we had those fans all through the sale barn. We had them in the grandstands during demolition derby. We had them in the grandstands during the truck and tractor boom.
Yes.
We literally went through two boxes of whatever we ordered, more than that.
More, yeah.
And so we have only one box left to utilize through the rest of the year, but they were a big hit. I mean, people came and, hey, where'd you get the fans? And they would come in and we handed tons of those out. And it was hot. So it was something that was needed. Hopefully, they took it home. It has our address so they can watch our meeting today, tomorrow, or listen to the meeting today, watch tomorrow. And has senior services stuff on the back. And maybe next year, we do that, but then we include the phone numbers of every department or something and they get...
When you're talking about expanding this and doing it in other times other than the fair, so a suggestion is that there are some farmers markets. And so those might be places to set up a table sometime, just to give out information to the public.
Well, one thing that goes with that is, Bill, I'm going to need your help on this one. We got to get better, we got to get cell and internet service out to the fair. I heard that from everybody.
I had to.
Oh, man.
Even the neighbors, I was saying, if you live in the neighborhood, you got no cellphone all week. Dollar General store down the road was cash only because they couldn't use their credit card terminal because of the fair.
Yep.
And when you have those larger crowds at the fair, you're crippled. And it's something that, you know, I don't know how many times we tried to get out and you'd be cut off and you couldn't get out and you couldn't reach anybody. I mean, it's 2023, we have plenty of property there. We need to figure out how do we contact a cellphone provider? We need a tower in the fairgrounds somehow. And we need to bolster internet service, even for safety. I know it's the third day, Thursday, I think it was, a guy had a seizure and they said that they had tried calling for assistance for twenty minutes. And then finally, somebody ran and found a deputy. The deputy was able to get on the radio. They radioed another deputy who went and got the medics. But it was twenty minutes between the time the guy went down. And by the time someone, it was already in the fairgrounds. Could have been there in two minutes had they got the call. Someone was down on the ground with that and you can't have that. If something major would have broke out, we need communication services. And there wasn't even a hard line. Yeah, I went even to sheriff's department booth and said, hey, is there a hard line that I can dial out somewhere? Nowhere.
No.
You know, I could have went into the fair booth, I guess, if I really needed it. They probably have one, I would imagine. But, you know, their workers aren't sitting in there in the phones. I mean, they're regular date, daytime people. But we will have better communications. Emergency-wise, with the command center next year, they'll have their own channel and their own 911 route right there. I guess they have like a mini little thing for that. But we got to do something.
Well, if the command center, let me ask this commissioner, Bill Hart, Tremble County Maintenance, if the command center would be there, wouldn't they have that technology in their new facility?
They will for emergencies somewhat, but that's not going to help someone that's trying to call a phone line or trying to call the sheriff's department or trying to call for a ride or whatever it is. You know, they're just crippled. Now, of course, you get that at concerts or anywhere. You go to see a game at the Q or whatever, or to watch the Guardians play or something. Everyone's taking pictures, you can't get a text out, you can't get a phone call. You'll have that with large amounts of people. But they have cellphone problems throughout the rest of the year in that area also. So it's something we just clearly need to get with AT&T, Verizon or whoever and let them know, hey, we're having a problem. Or even if they have something just during fairtime, where we can put up some internet boosters or something around there. People expect that. And there are people that, I was in the, I forget what the... The building, the commercial building. And bought like, bought Tupperware, some old, like vintage Tupperware. And I'm like, oh, that's what my grandma had, so what did I buy that? It's $300 on Tupperware. Anyway, they couldn't use a credit card. They had to swear and they couldn't use it, couldn't get internet. So they literally had to write my number down, said, well, run it tonight. Well, if I'd have been some Joe Schmo or whatever, and, you know, who knows, whatever. We can't cripple businesses that way. And she told me she lost business, that people, when the credit card wouldn't work, people walked away and said, now, you know, I'll try it back later. And never came back. So it is costing us commercially and for our customer base that people couldn't do business because they couldn't use a credit card terminal.
I'll do my best.
Martha.
Two things. First of all, so you bought $300 worth of Tupperware to hold your $2,000 chicken?
Yeah.
Is that what you got? Turkey, sorry.
Award-winning turkey.
That's right. Reserve turkey, reserve champion turkey.
I will, I meet with Tim today and so I'm gonna, I'll ask him, see if he has any suggestions.
And if he knows anybody, I don't know how, I'm sure cell companies usually approach us. We need to approach them and say...
You know, he did private sector IT before he did us. So he may have some contacts or something. I don't, I can't make any promises, but of course, I can bring it up to him.
Let's look at that, see if we can do that.
Sure, sure.
The other night, I have zero complaints with the fair. I think we need to publicly acknowledge the fair board somehow, some way, shape or form, and honor them somehow as a county for representing us so well and running such a good fair. Everything, people made comments that nobody got stuck, the roadways were great. The looks of the fairgrounds are great, the flowers were great that were around the fairgrounds. The customer service was great. The only hangups were the time it took to get people in the door and the cell and internet coverage. And then one person told me there was no trash can in the women's room under the grandstand. But I'm sure that was a glitch when someone probably cleaned it out and they just need another one back in there. So no big deal. And then I had a complaint, no one was picking up horse poop from the sheriff's deputy horses. But I brought that up to one of the fair board members and like, hey, can we get a shovel or something out here? Because it was right on the midway, right, where people walked out. And he said, Commissioner, if we got demolition derby going on, we got every, every warm body's in there helping, you know, direct traffic or do something. So it was just a staffing issue. Martha.
Just heard from Tim, I think I have ideas.
There we go.
To be continued, we'll talk about that.
Good. But we owe that to the public. Because I can't tell you how many people said, that was the one thing when they found out who I was or whatever, like, I can't get cell service out here. I can't get the internet. So we need to make, we need to do better there. And final thing, I guess, with that then is, I know years ago, I remember we had a booth at the Italian American Festival. And I remember seeing the pictures of the commissioners and they were in with, I think, solid waste or recycling, something. Had a display there, go green team or whatever it was, was utilizing that. And I think the success we had with the fair, now that's different. You know, we don't own the fairground, I mean, we own the fairgrounds, it's kind of our thing. But, and these other festivals are a little more privately done. But they're, our community is pretty much based around churches, you know, when we, people settled here. And you have the Greek community in one area, you have the Italian community in another area. And I think that's how these festivals celebrating their heritage kind of came, kind of came to be. So this is something that, you know, I'd like to talk about. Do we want to have a booth again or some presence at these festivals again? You know, we've got the Italian American Festival coming up in August. We got some fans left. A little too soon, I guess, probably for the Greek festival, because it's this weekend. And then the African-American Chevers Festival, we already had. But is that something we want to look at? Or is there some way we can have a footprint there, being it's right outside there? I know we just went over the comp issue and all that stuff. So, I mean, we don't want to, you know, we got to be sensitive of that and look into that. But I still believe the service we provided far outweighs, you know, the less than forty hours of comp time that we came out this week for employees to be there to serve the public. Thoughts on that?
I think, I think, number one, I, all good points and especially talking about, I think Alex brought it up. We get caught up in, you know, we're in the ivory tower over here and we just assume that people know everything we do. But community outreach and having that captive audience of, you know, the Tremble County Fair, even the Italian American Festival is critically important because a lot of people outside of this square don't know what we do. So they don't know that they can get senior rides. They don't know that there's, you know, adult services for them. They don't know that expectation that we have and all this. Like, so I definitely think the more community outreach we can do, better when it comes to educating the public on what we do. We've done it in the past, it was very successful. We partnered with, and my memory is a little hazy, but I think we partnered with the Georgia Tremble Solid Waste District and we, with a focus on recycling and a focus on, you know, because that's a joint agency. We have a Georgia county and that's something we've... The joint district has spent thousands upon thousands of dollars on. We just sent out a new mailer that was in a box, I'm sure, in Tremble County about recycling. So there are a lot of different things we can promote at these fairs and festivals every time we get the opportunity to do so. We're not doing a service for us, we're doing a service for the citizens who aren't aware of us. And trust me, there's a lot. There's some in my own family that don't know. And anytime you get a chance to have a captive audience like that and try to educate, I think it's valuable. I'm for it. It's something we can do.
Can we have Amy? Can you look into, you get with Sherrod, see what we've done in the past and possibly look into the pricing of booths, maybe call the committee for that and see, see the possibility? It doesn't have to be anything elaborate and maybe we, maybe we don't man it as much or maybe we do some volunteer or a hybrid blend of...
You know, the fair, the fair committee might even donate, you know, at some point because they realize the importance. I mean, it's worth asking because they realize the importance of getting that information.
When they come down and the more experience they get, the more people want to come down to something like that.
I mean, we can definitely weigh the options once they give us a price and all.
Figure out.
Commissioner, this is $175 for a bid. More in a time than ever.
Well, and with government's out, so we're saying it might be a little different with that, with government.
If you want to do something jointly, I'm willing to do it as well.
Pardon me?
If you want to do something jointly, I'm willing to work with you guys as well. And with manning it, if you'd rather do it on your own, that's fine too. But we still have information to get out there and we would love to make sure people know what's going on with all the things that we have. Whatever you guys want to do.
I get calls about your office, just about the homestead exemption, almost weekly.
So we're willing to help you guys and have a part of it. And, you know, with what we did with the fair, if you guys want to work together, I'm fine with that.
You know, and we look at it too, you know, you get the Arcs Rose and Mesa Entertainment, that's a whole nother group of citizens in the county. I don't know if we've ever been exposing them at all. I don't know if we've ever done any outreach to them or the Amish community or to just that part of the county. And I mean, we have to look at those different things. You know, we've got some great festivals, some great fairs. I mean, that's what makes Moaning Valley and Tremble County unique. And we've got Beth doing it every single day on tourism side of things. But, you know, maybe we should do more on the services side as far as how we can serve them, how our offices can help them, how we can better their lives through government. And government not being a bad name, but a good name. So let's look at that. I appreciate the input everybody has regarding that.
If I could just end with, Alex Deander-Devene-Johns, human resources director. What, outside of the public that we're serving, the camaraderie that we're building within our department has, I mean, that's another invaluable thing. I worked next to the engineers booth, we worked next to the toilets house booth. I mean, the employees that we got to interact with, the admins that I've never met, you know, and we're working together as department heads and directors with the board of commissioners. I mean, this is, I think what we need to look at is the value add in what we're doing right now. I mean, we're really moving the ball forward.
And this is nothing new. I worked in the state government before.
Correct.
And many of us have worked in different, there are different factors. That's what they do.
And we're learning about each other.
At the state fair, places like that, the state employees are engaged, they're active, whether it's ODOT or DNR or whatever it is, they go to things like that. They go to sports shows, they go to, they do community outreach to bring government to the people a lot. So this is nothing new. This is nothing outlandish. This is nothing that's abusive in any way, shape or form. This is what we should be doing. If we could do our work, still get our work done and needs done, the tasks that we have at hand and have outreach at the same time to engage people, that's a win-win all the way around, I believe.
Outreach enhances transparency.
Absolutely, it does too. Absolutely. Okay, we good with that? Okay. Yes.
This is Angela Mesa.
Here.
This is French Co. Mr. Malloy.
Here. All right, dispense the minutes. Approve the bills, decrease appropriations, neocap. Martha?
Um, they are not going to receive all the money that they estimated for the year, so they decreased that appropriation. I'm going to go ahead and, because I have three, four and five and six.
Yes.
I'm going to go ahead through all of these really quick. So on three, that was a decrease. There's additional appropriations for item number four, I'll go through those. The DD is a federal grant, adult probation is a grant. They needed to increase, oh, I'll let sanitary engineers talk. Adult probation is also a grant. You guys had a commissioner's increase, which was a park district that you guys voted on not that long ago. And then there's a special elections grant for the board of elections. Would you like to do sanitary engineering there?
Ours is just $2,000 additional project money for our own water project and that's to cover Tribune ad for our public notice.
And I just want to let you guys know that items three and four correspond with the estimated revenue changes in number six, the amended certificate. So those all, those correspond with each other, so they act together. And then for number five, the transfer appropriations. The $500 is to six and over budget. They put foreign judge expense, which I assume is a visiting judge expense, to seminars and training. The health department is, it just says workers' comp to remittances. And workers' comp, you're going to probably see a lot of transfers out of workers' comp. and workers' comp, you're gonna probably see a lot of transfers out of workers' comp line items, because it's paid for the year, so they have money left in the, in that line item, so you're gonna see folks pulling that out and putting it either into contingencies or into other things, because it's, they have money there, so they're using that. Um, the Board of Elections, uh, I love that amount on that, three thousand three. We're gonna be really exact there. Operations supplies, uh, to court reporters and seminars as well as training, um, the planning commission, they have, and they sent me, they sent me a little letter, um, they had ninety-five dollar appropriation transfer is from the general, uh, general fund to pay for, uh, new employees drug tested background. Um, and then mental health, um, social services to computer services and software, I just want to remind you, with both the health department and mental health, they have their own boards, so these are just journalizing actions that have already been approved by their own boards.
Thank you. Number seven, approved modification number one with Prime AE Group, Inc., the Yankee Lake Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project, number five S eighteen, located Brookfield Township, Bills of Yankee Lake. Modification is for an additional eighty thousand, seven forty-eight, provides in the total contract amount of four eighty-five, seven thirty-two, and includes services association, associated with additional easements and contract document revision. Relocation of primary pump station and associated reenlinements, and also adding additional pump station in Forest Main along Yankee Run Road.
All right, uh, Commissioners, uh, I'm in sort of a quandary with this, uh, project regarding a million dollars that I'm anticipating on getting from the state through that House Bill forty-eight money. If we don't get the two million dollars, we were already prepared that we were going to take out a portion of this project and make a standalone project in the future. And I was sort of holding off on doing this modification until I got that determination from the state that we have the two million. But time is, we're, we're in a time crunch now, that if we don't get this project bid out in October and awarded in November, then I lose a million dollars in principal forgiveness to Ohio EPA, because we have to have a two thousand twenty-three loan award. So, I was sort of holding off on this modification until I heard about the two, until we got the two million, but we don't have that luxury anymore. And so we need to go ahead and move along with this.
What's the holdup on House Bill forty-eight?
Uh, we have been in contact with the Department of Development, I've sent emails, I've had, uh, um, Governor's Office with Meffler, he's friends with Governor, uh, went through their office, uh, Chamber, we've asked other people, can we get a determination on this thing? The best I can get is they're gonna announce all the funding in late summer. So that tells me September twenty-first. We need, and for us to be able to get this project put together, and we need these engineering modifications, we need to move forward with this now. The modifications that we need to make, okay? The Yankee Run Road. Yankee Run Road here, we have an interceptor going down here, okay? Warren Sharon Road is down here. We have this interceptor, and we need to service these people here. Problem is that, if you look at the road out here, all these houses are sitting seven or eight feet, you can see the contours.
Yeah.
All these houses are sitting way below the road. So, the idea was to...
Where's Yankee Lake Forum and...
It, it's way up there. So we're, we're not going around Warren Sharon Road here, this is the southern half of the project, that we were gonna cut out of it if we don't get that two million. But in order to serve this, if we do get the two million, we were gonna run a gravity line, collect all these people here, run a gravity line across here, and into that interceptor. Well, this guy that owns this property, he has these mining rights on it, and apparently millions of dollars worth of gravel down inside this property. So what we went through to get the easement, he won't give it to us, because there's a minimum amount of acreage that he needs in order to mine us. We give him the easement, he loses that. So we even said, well, can we run it here? No, can we run it there? No, so we can't do any of them. Now we gotta drop a pump station here, run it all the way back to the gravity sewer here. So all this is gonna feed to a pump station here, run it up to here, then down through there, so that we don't impact, uh, that property. If we do try to force an easement from him, I think a judge is gonna declare that's worth cuckoo money. So we're taking away his rights to dig out the million dollars worth of gravel. So anyway, that's...
And it would be cheaper to, to utilize a pump station?
Well, it's, it's our only option.
Okay.
This would be cheaper.
Well, I mean, but even if that easement is, is very expensive.
Oh, yeah, 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 it's easy, we have, we have to pay for that easement, yes. It, 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 the cost of the pump station is less than the cost of what that easement would be. So anyway, that's why we're having to do that. Uh, and so the design includes putting that pump station in, and rerouting both of these gravity-wise to come into these, Forest Main back up to there. Then up in the village itself, our original pump station was here, Ballroom is sitting over in here, okay? And just by moving this pump station, this, this many feet down here, the depth of that sewer, it increases from an average of twelve foot, from twenty-two foot deep to twelve feet deep. So we need to, and that's a twenty-two foot deep sewer, up in here, uh, I don't know if you guys can envision a twenty-foot deep trench. The ceiling there is what about?
Yeah.
How high's your ceiling, Bill?
Two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve, fourteen, sixteen, eighteen, twenty, twenty-two feet.
Yeah.
From that to here.
Twenty-two feet fighting a water table, and we can reduce the depth of that to twelve feet. So it, 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 it will behoove us to make this engineering correction now, instead of having to pay an additional, I can see that being well over a hundred thousand dollars for changing it. So anyway, that, that engineering mod includes moving this, relocating that pump station to reduce the depth of that trench, and plus, uh, when we originally contracted with AE Group, we were only anticipating about five easements, and now we need eleven. So they need to do descriptions, surveys, and, uh, meeting bounds for eleven easements instead of five.
So, so the additional eighty thousand for the engineering modification, what, what pot of money is that coming from?
I don't know.
Up to the two million?
We already have the one point three five million from Sean O'Brien.
Okay.
That he put into the project funds, so he has the monies on hand, uh, the, the, to pay for this.
Okay.
Ben Rance. Rance is Sean O'Brien's office.
We gotta hope that House Bill forty-eight gives us the other two million.
Yes, yes. If not, well, the thing is, I have to have this design ready to go, if they do give it to us. If they don't, then we'll at least have this, these engineering mods done, so I can do a second project later to pick up that second section.
Okay. I understand that.
Absolutely.
All right. Very good, thank you, Gary. I was Gary Newborough, sanitary engineer. Uh, number eight, authorize Board of Tremble County Commissioners clerk to advertise for request for statement of qualifications or letter of interest for consultant engineering services for the Crane Drive Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project, known as County Project Number Seven S twenty-two, located in Weathersfield Township.
All right, Commissioners, uh, Gary Newborough, sanitary engineer. Uh, as a result of your award for the ARP funds, we are able to move forward with Crane Drive now, and put out the request for qualifications for the engineering portion of that project. I do intend on submitting this as our OPWC project for this upcoming round.
Okay. Number nine, grant permission to county engineer to close the roads listed in Follies Mills and Farmington Township, Monday, July seventeenth. Um, Wakefield Creek and Gustavus, Tuesday, July eighteenth. Strew Pickoffs in Farmington, Friday, July fourteenth. Pierce Road, Champion, Thursday, July twentieth, and Fri- through Friday, August eleventh. So we got one, two, three, already been done before the meeting, and, uh, Pierce, Pierce Road is, uh, the only one still pending, all right? Number ten, encourage Tremble County Engineers to grant the right-of-way permits for Dominion East and Spectrum Mid-America. Pretty familiar with those. Eleven, adopt the alternative tax budget for the next fifteen fiscal year, ending December thirty first, twenty twenty-four, effective July nineteen, twenty twenty-three, and authorize me, President of Board Tremble County Commissioners, to execute the alternative tax budget. Martha?
Okay, so first of all, just note the special note that the Tremble County Budget Commission waived the adoption of the annual tax budget. So this is the alternative to that, um, the, uh, to come up with this budget. Uh, first of all, Christie Best described it as our rough draft for the budget for next year. So this isn't, you know, this is just, just the beginning, right? Uh, we use the figures that, uh, were returned to us in Ju- when, that were requested in June, that were returned to us. And, um, our software also, so some folks didn't always return everything, so, uh, but our software sort of generally defaults to the prior year, and then we go in and make those adjustments, uh, from, as requested. So everything's here, uh, the first schedule is everything that is, um, funded from local taxes. The second sched- uh, schedule is revenue, um, other than local taxes. And the third schedule is our notes and bond debt, and that is, the difference with that between these other ones, uh, the other ones are, um, projection, based on projections, and are for twenty-four. This is what our notes and bonds were, uh, as of January first of this year. So the things that have been approved that we're in process on are not included in it.
Thank you.
Ma'am.
Follow.
Call of a vote across, clerk, I will, I'm gonna go get, uh, after the meeting, you and Mr. Cannon.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you guys already had.
Yeah.
It's, uh, you can just look at them if you have questions, please feel free. Um, you can even email me in advance of the meeting tomorrow if you have questions, um, uh, Christie or I. I'm here till like three thirty today, um, if you include Christie on it, she's here till four thirty.
Very good.
Okay.
Okay, number twelve, notify, uh, Department of Liquor Control, Public Carrying, not request on liquor permits for Ray and S LLC and patio to Italian River LLC and patio, it's a North River Road. And then we have one for Leonardo's Uptown Pizza, to become Uptown Belmont Avenue Pizza. Transfer class, Donofrio Foods Fair, Mayburg Mall, to Katie Brothers. Yankee Run Golf Course, Yankee Run Lounge, to MC Pickles, The Links By The Tracks. Okay, thirteen, approve the promotion of Ms. Rebecca Smith as the District Human Resources Executive Assistant. The job description has been revised to absorb more responsibilities, therefore Rebecca would move from pay range eight to pay range nine. Effective Monday, July twenty-fourth, uh, job description and table organization are included. Um, this was, uh, when we lost Steve Charles to a different department. We, um, we moved Rebecca up to acting, uh, executive assistant, and at that time even, we were in transition, uh, with, um, directors. And, uh, she seems to be working really well with Alexandra. Uh, Alexandra has a plan to go from four employees in her office to three, so it'll be her, Rebecca, and a new employee to be named, uh, there, you know, that'll be posted soon. Um, and with that, they're, they're all gonna have to do a little bit more work than what they did before. So that's the, the pay step increase, uh, for Rebecca. She's been here, how many years with the county?
Eight.
Eight years. I, I think this is well deserved, she, um, she does a, a very valuable service. She's the one, when people get hired, um, they get signed up for insurance, and they got questions on dental, vision, or any of those types of things, she's the go-to person for that, which again is, is very, very valuable. Um, and I looked at the scale, I sat down with Alexandra, we kind of looked at her plan, uh, budget-wise, and her plan, um, for the three employees that'll be in there, and I think this fits right in there with the pay range nine. There was a little debate on should it be ten or nine, and I think after compromise and, and relooking and everything, I think, uh, I think the nine, um, is fair to her, is fair to the position, and the job work, is fair to all the other employees that, that are, you know, a nine or a ten, it fits right in there at that nine. Maybe the high end of a nine.
I just want to commend Alex, uh, he always preached do more with less, she's actually enacting that with her plan here. Um, Rebecca is, uh, started around the same time Rebecca and I, and, uh, she is just an absolute joy to work with, as Alex will attest to. And everybody else has worked with her, uh, so valuable, so dedicated, her work ethic is impeccable. Uh, so that department is in good hands, appreciate what you're doing there, and giving tax pay is money.
Um, if I may, Alex Devene Johnson Bush, I, I just have to echo what both Commissioners said, but particularly Commissioner Cannon Mesa, because you've been here with Becky. Um, Becky held down, let's talk about an invaluable service to this county. Becky held down that Human Resources, um, department, one way or another, for almost two years, uh, with little to no help. Um, she is quiet, however, never underestimate somebody who's quiet, uh, or what they do behind the scenes, right? So I'm the voice of the department now, and she's kind of the back, you know, she's kind of the more quiet one who sits back. But let me tell you, she's small but mighty. When, when she gets stuff done, it's done, and it's behind the scenes. And the work ethic is something that I wanted to really drive home here. Um, when you think about a department as long, as large as ours, for how many employees, uh, we, we service in this county in general, Becky has the work ethic, she has not taken time off, she is there, she makes sure that there's always a face for Human Resources when somebody needs something. I can't put a dollar amount on a work ethic that valuable, to be quite frank with you. So, thank you for acknowledging that.
Absolutely. Awesome.
Yep, so I have no problem with that at all. Great. Okay, number fourteen, advertise for fifteen days internally and externally for the position of Human Resources Coordinator, pay range eight within the Human Resources Department. Job description, table organization are included, and that will be the third piece of the puzzle to make your office complete. Um, I look forward to seeing who we get for that, and, and the job duties on that will be, again, a hybrid of,
Yep.
of the former, some of Becky's old duties and some of Nancy's duties. Um, so, that'll make our office complete there. Number fifteen, approve personnel action for employment of Kyle Scott, who is a bargaining position of automotive technician one, pay range nine, with Tremble County Vehicle Maintenance Department effective Monday, July thirty-first. He successfully completed jerk screening background check. Mr. Hart?
Commissioners Bill Hart, Tremble County Maintenance. Um, I have a, a, like, a resume, I showed Ken, Commissioner Cannon Mesa earlier, on his qualifications, just so you see that we've waited an awful long time as Commissioners and Mayor. We tried Facebook, we tried all kinds of things, so, um, just as far as his resume goes, his certificate, and all of his, what he's certified in, uh, it took five years to do an exam, he got it done in two. So he's certified for all these, under the General Motors.
Yeah, that's...
Coming from Spitzer Chevy.
Yeah.
Coming from Spitzer Chevy, yeah.
Can't say that.
And he's twenty-four years old.
That's impressive.
It is impressive.
Very impressive.
So I waited a long time, but I guess waiting is worth the wait.
Oh, we keep a guy like that for a long time.
Yeah.
Very good, good catch. Number sixteen, authorize Board Tremble County Commissioners clerk to advertise for request for statement of qualifications or letter of interest for consultant engineering services for the State Road Water Regionalization Project Number Two, W twenty-three, located in Champion and Sudings in Townships.
All right, Commissioners, Gary Newborough, sanitary engineer. This is another one where you have recently awarded the ARP funds, I'll recover the engineering contract. And I think I've shown this to you before. And I think I've shown this to you before. But this is a project to, build a pump station here in Champion, run, and run a water main out here to Sudington Township to connect into the Braceville District. This will regionalize these two districts into one. I'm still not sure of the name that we'll call them. I don't know if we'll just keep the Champion Bezetta District the same and just have this absorb it. But once they're interconnected, we can regionalize-
Are we all one district now anyway?
Financially, we still have public water systems in the eyes of the EPA. So we still have Champion Bezetta public water system here, the Braceville here. Uh, as you may be aware, we're having water quality problems up through here with this public water. They, they treat with chloramines, they treat with chlorine. Uh, this, they stable much longer. The shelf life on the water is much greater once you're using chloramines. EPA is behind this, uh, as a matter of fact, the one, uh, recommendations from them. When I sent in the funding application to water supply revolving loan funds from this project, I liked it so much, they scored it second in the state out of over five hundred projects. So we got, uh, fifty percent principal forgiveness on five point one million dollar project cost, so.
Fantastic.
Looking at over two and a half million of this. But it's the same thing when it comes to principal forgiveness, you got a year to award a contract. So we need to get moving on this engineering, so that we don't run into that problem. Uh, we need at least a June two thousand twenty-four loan award. So that means we're gonna have to advertise it somewhere in March in order to make that happen. So we need to get moving on this engineering.
Okay.
Okay?
Alright, number seventeen, Discussion of Mental Health and Recovery Board of Applicants. It's Paula.
Paula Babelot, Court Clerk. Um, Commissioners, I have a board file of, for you, uh, Ms. April Keraway, Director of the Mental Health and Recovery Board. Since the week six, two vacancies, Commissioner appointed vacancies. Uh, so I have a copy for you both and the friends who are in her file. One you'll see, uh, an applicant, the other one I just received yesterday from, uh, Ms. Lee State Smith. What Ms. Smith has to do now is she has to fill out an application for, um, Ms. Keraway. And Ms. Keraway will check it as the qualification and see if there's any conflict. But I'm just letting you know, open meeting, there's two open seats, and these are the applications that I have, so.
Only two applicants for two open seats?
I believe so, yes.
Unless April has others, I guess.
I will check with-
I don't think she would.
But these are two, um, seats that could be pointed by the Commissioners Office, but Ms. Smith does have to do that. But I just received her, so I'm working with April to get her that information, so.
I've always been on there for quite some time already.
Not sure, I've got a, a look in there that shows-
Twenty twenty.
Members, okay, yeah. I believe Commissioner Cannon-Mason, there's a sheet there that shows the several members, there you go.
Oh, there we go. Yeah, I'm fine with, uh, sending these over to April and having her look at them. And, I mean, she, she won't make ultimate decision, we will.
Right.
But she, she'll tailwind the dog, but she's always weighed in on a lot of these and it's been spot on. Uh, with mental health, so, uh, just been looking at both of these candidates, they look pretty-
Is that the deadline's up for people to apply?
Uh, I couldn't answer that, we'll have to ask Ms. Keraway. I don't believe so, but I'm not sure how she, uh, assured, how to answer that. So I'll have to ask her and get back with you on that.
Thought we'll wait and take what other applicants get.
Sure, absolutely, I will talk to her today and I'll let you know tomorrow, the meeting.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that concludes the, uh, regular agenda item. There's one other agenda item I wanted to bring up, um, and that is Alexandra has her probationary period fulfilled now. And when we hired her, um, we brought her in, um, and you had a hundred and twenty day, was it? Was it a hundred and twenty day probationary period? I think we knew on day two, she was a rock star and she was the right person for the job. And, uh, you've proven that over and over and over and over again. We had a wage skill set when we hired that, that she would bump up to after completion of that. Um, one thing I did look into, one thing I wanted to know is, we do have some other HR people in the county. Uh, we have an HR person in JFS, and we have an HR person, um, in, uh-
Sanitary.
Board of Developmental Disabilities.
Sanitary, sure, yes, yeah, yeah. So there are other HR people.
Engineers.
The position where we're bumping her up to now, uh, I realize, looking at stuff, is actually less than the other ones that only manage one department. So, um, I wanna be fair all the way across the board with this, but with the number of departments Alexandra's gonna oversee, uh, I wanted to ask maybe we should just look at that to see where we are in that scale, compatibility-wise, because to bring her in less than what a, uh, HR director in JFS makes, that just handles their two hundred and fifty employees or so, compared to Alexandra who's handling sixteen hundred or so, um, and with the wide range of things. I, I just wanna make sure we're fair, you know, that we don't undercut her, her or us. Um, and we, we don't wanna go through a transition of HR directors ever again, like we went through the last couple of years. Um, so that's something, I guess, uh, I think we should look at and look at the scale of, of what they're, of what they do.
Yep.
Um, and I guess, how, how do you think we should address that? And is that something?
Yeah, I, I don't know offhand, where, everybody falls on scales, and everybody around falls, as far as that goes, but, um, definitely worth looking into. I wasn't aware that number that was agreed upon after the probationary period would have been less than anybody else. So I, I guess I need to look at it.
You know, and that, and that was the number that Charles helped-
Right, right.
Find and, you know, he, he formed a good service with that, but as we can tell,
We can recover that.
Over the last couple of meetings, that may not have been the most scientifically accurate, um, correct, you know, placement of that.
Yeah.
So, uh, we were lucky that she accepted the, the offer that we have. But now moving forward permanently, I wanna make sure that it's from here on in, it's just the scale bumps and the annual bumps, things like that, the time and grade and all that type of stuff that, that will continue on in, in her career. So I wanna make sure that we land there, there exactly where it needs to be.
Sure, fair enough.
And, um, Alexandra, do you have any input on how, as HR Director, how you would handle if you were dealing with another employee besides yourself?
Um, well, I think you wanna look at the comparable, um, so obviously, you know, I can, obviously I can prove to you that, uh, JFS, HR Administrator, as well as Board of Developmental Disabilities, as well as, to be quite frank, everybody in this room, um, makes, makes more than I do. Um, but that's here nor there. Um, I do also have to account for the fact that, you know, I know that I didn't have the experience coming in here. So I think that was kind of a leverage tool when you guys were looking to hire me. But I do think that at this point-
But that was just to get you in the door.
Correct, yeah. I think that I've proven, um, and I think that Auditor, I think everybody at this table, yes, Bob is sanitary, HR, but Bob talks to me three times a day. I mean, Bob, I don't, I don't mean to throw you on the spot, but he looks to me for advice for this county. I mean, they all look to me, even though they have internal HR administrators, they're all coming to me for F M L A, life insurance, health insurance. I mean, everything that keeps this county running up behind the scenes. And it is a little bit, um, to be quite frank with you, i- it is sometimes a little deceiving, you know, knowing, you know, but it is what it is, and I took this job knowing that. But what I'm asking is that now that I'm here, um, I'm not asking for anything crazy, I'm just asking that we relook at, you know, the true value in this position and that I be fairly compensated.
We'll look at that.
Thank you.
I think what we, um, what we agreed upon initially was to bring up the forty-two point seventy cents an hour. When I looked at the-
All right, offhand.
It was, I, I pulled it up from the entry we had. And from the, um, the research that I did just looking at JFS and, and DD, you know, they're both over ninety-three, ninety-six. Um, there it is. Forty-one, six, eight, um.
I wanna be transparent, so I brought that-
Oh, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I brought that for you too.
I think that, uh, to bring it compatible is where they are, uh, with their one department's, um, forty-three, seven, one, is where the sweet spot would be, where, where she should be. Uh.
Yeah, I'd like to work with this deal, I'm already here.
Yeah, explain that.
So I just wanna be transparent with everybody here, so that way we're being fair. I'm currently right here. And I just, I think that it would be fair to just bump me up one step a little bit. I'm not asking you to go up a pay range, I'm not asking for any of that. I'm just asking, when I initially asked to accept the offer, I, I counteracted with ninety, and I was told, you know, we'll be up for probation. So that's all I'm asking to be for that. I'm asking for ninety-two more than, than what I'm currently at. I don't think I'm asking for a whole lot, to be honest with you, but-
Well, I, I think when you streamline the department, if you are doing, uh, obviously those ancillary job duties go to other people, yourself, Becky.
Correct.
Uh, so we need to make the wage scale reflect that.
Correct.
Um, so I'm not opposed to it, I just wanna look at it and assess it.
Yeah, take whatever time you need.
Yeah.
I just wanted to get it on your radar.
And there's still a savings every year.
Yes, yes.
Especially when you wrap in those legacy costs.
Correct.
Retirement costs and all those different things, helping earn, hiring new individuals, so, still a significant savings.
Significant, actually.
And if we, if we, um, uh, take the time, do the research this week, put on agenda for next week if we were to do something, we always go retroactive back to-
Sure.
Where you're, you're, you're gonna be bumped up now per, or, or already agreement that we had. We don't have to journalize or, or anything, that's already been voted on, intended to journal already after probation, you go up to that, so. Let's do that and let's look at it and see where we, where we fall in with that.
Yep.
Were you wondering, you know, this is, like you said, it is streamlining from four to three.
Yep.
And at the same time-
Still a significant savings.
I think every department head would agree that we made the right choice. So. Okay, anybody, any other department heads have anything for the good of the county before we get to Mr. Masaki?
Go ahead, now.
Um, I just have a question with regard to the continuance that was granted yesterday. I know that we're hoping that things get resolved, but you will, do have a, a public hearing listed on the twenty-eighth. Um, I don't know what was needed as far as overflow yesterday, um, but do we want to plan for that contingency again as far as the IT?
I think it's too soon to tell, because just from what I saw yesterday, it seems like they may, if they come to an agreement on their own, the next hearing may just be to withdraw the petition and then them working on their own, which doesn't involve the Commissioners at all.
Okay. We'll just keep it on our radar as far as the IT goes, just because, you know, we don't wanna be trying to do-
I don't wanna waste the money on IT doing extra work, doing larger extra work, and the sonography.
Well, we're, we're not gonna, I mean, we won't do anything now, but we need to know that it's a possibility so that we're not trying to scramble four days ahead of time like we did last.
Paula?
Paula Babelot, Court Clerk, I sent an email out this morning, uh, for the, say that there was a motion to continue for the annexation. I sent it to, uh, the Sheriff, to Mrs. Joder, to Mr. Hannah Hurt, as I do, uh, our scheduler, depending on the Commissioner's scheduler, as it, it was a lot of work, and, uh, to Mrs. Julie Green, who was so kind to offer her conference room. So, um, like, thank you for reminding me, Mrs. Joder, because it's all those people, it's so important, it takes all those people to make it happen. So I'll just keep everyone informed if I receive any motions for withdrawal.
That's helpful, yeah.
Or anything, I will keep all of you, um, in, involved in, with the knowledge of, of that. So we'll just keep going with that.
I guess, and that is right, yeah, we, we do have a hearing scheduled for the twenty-eighth, but I am in this room, so.
Right, we just wanna, we just wanna make sure that we're,
Yes.
we're ready.
Yes.
Cause it was a little bit of a scramble to try to get everything together, um, to make sure that we could, did you guys end up overflowing at all?
No, we, we had, I believe, oh, not even fifty people, so we, we could, we were clicking.
So it was counted, was it? I think it was sixty-nine.
Yes.
We could, we could, oh, never assume, we could never assume, but seeing that there are only forty-nine or fifty yesterday, I wouldn't think reasonably you would have, we can fit one hundred and twenty-seven in here, but I believe that, it did seem crowded. I can't imagine having a hundred and twenty-seven people.
But we, we've had way more people than that in our department before.
Yes, right, but, um, but we'll just-
But it was, nevertheless was crowded.
It, it was, it was, but we'll always keep you informed, that's why this morning I made sure that all of you, cause I really could not, I mean, Mr. Hart was here at six setting things up, and your IT had to make sure that the conference room at planning and Sheriff, uh, provided service there, whether we needed it or not, the, the services were there prepared. So thank you, and, um, I'll make sure I keep you and everyone informed.
And job and family.
And job and family, yes, this is our Giano, I don't believe we'll, uh, reasonably need this, the conference room at planning and job and family.
If it's, if it was to work, if it was gonna go over, I would defer to job and family first since they're closer. And then anything from there could go to planning, because, you know, John Gargano emailed to his employees, Bill Hart, Turnbull County Maintenance. Um, keep everybody out of the lot. So if anybody had to come, there's parking right behind the building, walk in, go to the conference rooms and enjoy the meeting. Um, so preferably first, second, and planning, if there's an over, over that. So there's, if, if they park here, they go walk across the street.
Yep.
And you guys are keeping the clicker, so if you need it, yeah.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for the clicker.
Thank you so much. We'll give it back.
Okay.
Mr. Hart?
I have two things, Bill Hart, Turnbull County Maintenance. Um, just to keep the Commissioners informed on our courthouse project on the chillers, that we had a problem with the cooling tower. In case you get phone calls, cause, uh, the, uh, Italian festival's coming here, and it's around the corner. Um, the new cooling tower is supposed to arrive on the nineteenth, it's gonna be stored until the twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth, which is a Friday through Sunday. Hopefully, that temporary rental out there will be gone, because we already had a phone call from the fair. The festival wanting to know, you know, when's that gonna leave and all that good stuff. So just to keep you on the radar that the rental's out there until hopefully the twenty-ninth and it'll disappear. The fair will start, I think, on the second, or somewhere around there, and it starts setting up for the week after. That's one. The second one is our elevator black boxes should be installed today for the other side, so we'll have the two elevators.
That's wonderful.
And then I have to get with Auditor Joder just to make sure about the funding for the project for the new elevators.
Yeah, we, and we're, we're, that completes the ship this week, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, I'll-
Go ahead.
Good, no, sorry, I'm good.
I, I was just, I was just gonna say, also, uh, Mr. Hart, myself, have been checking with Prosecutor's Office. I know there's been, uh, at least some people have reached out to me and, and said, you know, what's the delay with the Dog Pound? And why are we not getting confirmation? Been requesting a rather lengthy request when it comes to the construction of the pound, as to how logistically we go about that, with a lot of different scenarios, obviously focusing on the animal welfare lease property there, um, regarding leases and donations and that sort of thing. But, uh, that, that opinion is still at Prosecutor's Office, I know Bill has checked on it, I've checked on it. Uh, it's, it's a rather thorough and lengthy opinion, and it will be so, uh, but, but we were told by Mr. Danson that it could be, or, or was it Mr. Toth?
Mr. Toth.
Mr. Toth, that it could be, uh, finished this week, so.
Yes.
Uh, we'll, we'll just look out for that and hopefully have more information with him. So I appreciate you looking into it.
Oh, you're welcome.
We did have a couple hour-long power outages in Turnbull County yesterday in, uh, Mecca Courtland in Highland Township. Um, nine-one-one center lost power, and the generator kicked in, and they had no issues with it. So Patty called me yesterday when it happened, she went into the center. Um, she said power came on in the rest of the county, actually before, uh, power was restored to nine-one-one center. But the, uh, generator there worked, so that's something I know we haven't, that's not the new one, that's still the old one, right?
No, that's still the old one.
Yeah, so they, they were a little nervous, and they said they're, but they had a backup plan ready to go, uh, with the morning now, or, or now that that were to happen, or now in worst time or whatever. But, um, uh, it did function properly yesterday and, you know, no issues, no delays. Anybody else on the table? Okay, I'm gonna go, uh, we got some guests here I wanna go to before we-
Maybe soft here.
Well, I, I can go.
Someone, uh, Mr.?
That's fine. They did-
It is, yeah, take care of that and we'll get to it. Uh, Mr. Robinson?
Okay, my name's John Robinson.
Come on up, you can, you can approach up there and-
Sure, yes, Gary, Newbrow, Mr. Newbrow?
Yes.
I, uh, have a little project over on Lee Road in Brookville. Uh, we, my son purchased, uh, some acreage there, okay? We were told there was sewer all the way through and everything. There was only sewer at two houses, we already built two brand new homes there and sold them immediately.
Right.
Um, we have to do a sewer extension. We have everything in line, uh, Buckeye did the engineering, we've already been to EPA, everything is approved, we're ready to go. I was wondering if there's any help for us, for this project. We're gonna build four new homes, four more new homes. The two homes that we built, the taxes of, my son told me, was like almost twelve thousand dollars a year in taxes just on those two. I'm just looking for some help to get us through this part, building four more new homes, you guys know what it costs to build a house. And we're doing this all- I'm just looking for some help to get us through this part, building four more new homes, you guys know what it costs to build a house, and we're doing this all out of no banks, my son is in, involved with this, is trying to get this going, we had no idea this wasn't done. We could've went after him, it's the same guy that owned the, uh, um, antique mall there, John, something like, I, I don't know what his last name was, but he, we were told that we had water, so we, the water's there, the gas is there.
What, did the property owner told you this?
Mm, yeah, when we bought.
Did he come to our office and check it?
No, no, we didn't.
Okay.
You know what we did?
Alright.
I'm related, my son along, Julie Gorilla, he went over there and said, hey, you got it, there's manholes and this and that, we just go for it as we did. I don't wanna go s- after this guy or do anything like that.
Okay.
It's our problem, we didn't check into it. So, here we are, I mean, I had a price, the guy who's done some of our estimating and stuff like that, which you know DSL, estimating, you know, everything is here, I'm just asking, is there any grant, any loan that, you know, a low, you know, something to get us through to the next four homes so we can s- get this money cumulated into the house when we sell it? Instead of us putting, you know, this is gonna cost us close to about fifty thousand is what the, what the price is.
Right.
Uh, and I've done everything to, to go through it, uh.
I, I, I wish I could tell you that there is some sort of financing, financing available to assist with this, but, this is a private extension by a developer.
Right, I know.
And we've never contributed any grant funds or any, anything towards that. Helper, they usually take it into a cause that was just gonna cost me this much to acquire, and they add that to the price of a lot, to the homes they're building, that sort of thing.
Yeah, that's why I was at, that's why I came this morning, just to see if it wasn't.
Okay, uh.
We are building the next four homes, you know, but our, our biggest thing right now is you put fifty thousand up for this, I build a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, you know, the time we're done, we're at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of our own money.
Right.
And we're just looking for help, I'm willing to, you know, I, my biggest thing was to see if there was a, what, something out there with a low interest.
Uh, there, yeah, we've never, no, on a private extension, we've never assisted with the financing.
Okay.
The whole, um, foundation of a private extension is that.
Yeah, the whole Lee Road, everything's done with.
It's privately, privately funded.
Mm-hmm.
And you can build it cheaper than we can because you don't have to use prevailing wage, and we have to.
Yeah, you know that part of the area.
Is it a road, is it a dead-end road, a road?
No, Lee Road goes up around, there's all kind of streets up through there, crest of wood, all over, but it stopped just six lots, and it was, it was the weirdest thing, we had two in.
Okay.
You know, they had the first two, which would've been six and five.
Right, right.
Because it goes uphill, uh, it's like eight foot to twelve foot, I think.
Now, this fifty thousand, this is the cost that you're estimating to extend it to.
Yeah. Yeah, it's like forty-eight and a, uh, something.
And how many lots, what, is it going to?
It'll give us four more lots.
Okay. I would say that's, that's a pretty good deal.
Yeah.
Um, fifty thousand is a service for houses, uh.
Is there anything Planning Commission would know that, that you would think of?
Nah, I can't think of anything from the Planning Commission either that would assist with. I don't think it's a low to moderate income area or anything like that.
No.
Um, yeah, I, I wish I had something to help you with that, but.
We're simply sitting here listening, you know.
Yeah.
You're gonna hear everything else. The Toma County Fair and everything, but, you know, I appreciate it, you know, I really do, 'cause I, I just thought if there is, I'm gonna get some, you know, I know that, I see that, you know, that's my plan, Yankee Lakens and all that.
I'm just surprised, it surprises me with the need we have for housing, there's gotta be some type of, something you would think, you know, like contingency program that we could set up to help these individuals that, you know, I mean, as far as.
For developers with private extensions, uh, we've just never, I, I, I can just say we've never done it, I'm not saying it can't ever be done.
Mm-hmm. Right.
But if the commissioners, I don't know, if you, if you wanted to entertain something like that, I'd, I'd take directives from you, but I, I just, the only thing I can think of that may help will be the ARP funds.
Right.
But, but that's, that's, the only, the only thing that, that's the only funding program I know of that would provide some sort of grant funding to help them.
I don't, I don't know if that's for that one. How do we do Scott Street with the hundred and sixteen houses?
Well, those are for connections, he, he's building mainline.
Okay.
This is for connections to the houses. Right, and they have to meet income thresholds in order to qualify.
Most of the, most of the improvements would just be rolled into the cost of the per lot.
And, and we, yeah, and, yes, and we probably do fifteen to twenty private extensions per year, and, and we've never, you know, provided any grant funding for developers to extend their sewers.
Do other counties have like contingency funds to help with developers and any of that stuff?
I, I, I don't know.
Ultimately, it's more customers and more.
I, I've never heard of anybody having that.
I'm just, I, I, I'm just asking, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm, uh, the County Sanitary Engineer Association of Ohio, you know, there's newsletters that sort of, I, I've never heard anything mentioned that anybody is helping to finance private extensions.
It's because of your private, yep.
Right. Even though they will become a customer?
I didn't know, I, I thought you were talking about connections at first, I didn't know you were talking about all mainline.
No, yeah.
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 Well, e- even for our regular customers, when we do extend the mainlines and we do get the grant funding, they're usually, well, they're always on the hook for some, for some sort of assessment or capital charge that's gonna equate, I wanna say roughly, at least ten thousand dollars, uh, of debt that they pay on their fill, uh, to retire the debt of the mainline estate. We're at about twelve and a half thousand per lot here, so.
I thought it was more one of those scenarios where we started the lateral connections with the ARP fund and we were able to help some of those people tie in, and this could be one of those things, but this is, we're talking about mainline.
Yeah, you're talking about mainline, yes. Now, once the houses are built and you have the main, well, af- after you have the mainline in, if somebody does build a house and they come, build a house, or you build a house for them when they come to make the connection, that homeowner, they could apply to us for that, uh, countywide, uh, assistance program we have for the sanitary laterals.
Well, okay, I guess it's worth it. Basically, me again down the road here.
Okay.
Uh, Danny, father has a hundred and twenty-four acres on the Clarish Kobe Road.
Okay.
He sold off the frontage for the last couple, three years, so, sewer run, he had the main sewer in the back, his property brought up, and then that's how he sold off.
Yeah, we, we have the interceptor running the other bodies, but.
Yeah, yeah, you know, we're a talker.
Very well, correct, yes, yes.
Yeah, so, he's eighty-eight years old the other day, still wants to do this, so I'll be back.
Oh, I know who you are now.
Larry Robinson, yeah. Yeah, he's a hundred and eighty-eight and he's still fighting, you know, he wants to do it.
Okay. Okay.
I had built one of the homes there, the big white house, I built there, but, uh, yeah, he, uh, he's determined to get a street through there and he wants some kind, you know, try to tell him, I know what it costs, you know, you better have a lot of money and be ready to go and, you know.
Okay, alright. Okay.
I think, uh, one of the gentlemen that was starting to help him years back was John, uh, Stoli.
Right, yes, yes.
That's the way, he's for it.
And, uh, Bill McCosky was, was his engineer, and Bill McCosky works for our office now.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, great, yeah.
So, so he's real familiar with everything here, yeah.
So, I may be back. I'm just waiting, you know, I'm waiting for that day, but I appreciate you, everybody.
Okay. Okay, alright.
Thank you, thank you.
Hey, it's a guy.
Alright.
Sorry about the delay.
No, no, don't worry about it, I got other time, I'll be back, man.
Alright, alright, thank you, but.
Thank you.
Mr. Rock?
Morning.
Morning.
Morning. I have several questions about several different topics. First, that Leffertsburg Heritage had put in a request for response to the, the project out there, it's been several months and nothing. So, uh, my court that it's probably sitting somewhere waiting for approval. The heritage, the historical thing, which other historical things have gotten, so, um, basically, the status of that.
Is that one of your spreadsheets?
No, you, you've not asked for it to be submitted.
I mean, do we have it on there?
Oh, yeah, I think it was, we look here. We've laid a sheet around the wrong one, but, uh, I think you're talking, was that about like a train and?
Yep.
You, you, we've seen it, you, it's on file, I don't know, these are part of my notes, so I don't know how I denote them. Okay, I, I call Leffertsburg Train Station Gallery, a hundred and eighty-two thousand one hundred, project to replace, you're a train depot for history and tourism.
Can you explain a little better, Steph, do you know anything more about it?
Well, I mean, we already have historical on, um, markers and stuff out there for the canal, um, the train station played a valuable part in, in the valley here. Part of Erie's Black Owana, uh, railroad went through there. Started in the town that I grew up in, on the other side of P, my grandfather's in force for the other company, so when he combined it was, it changed a whole lot better, but it's, um, big game changer in the day, uh, with the railroad there. Replace what was there.
And that, that is.
It's been on file two months here.
And, okay.
I mean, that's fairly recent, yes.
Is it, yes, and it, uh, is there a historical society in Leffertsburg that's amended or?
They have a building, uh, right there on Marcus Street next to the Liberty Stadium. We have, you know, our old gallery and that.
We used to have our commissioners meetings there once in a while.
Yeah, and I remember they completely remodeled the building, there's some siding and roofing, you decide to completely, um, a lot of time and effort.
Was there any other projects that the, that Historical Society submitted or they were talking about?
Just that one.
That one? Can I ask them, forward that one?
A second, yeah, forward it over to legal. That's the process, we send it to legal and then they tell us if it's fundable, then we can actually vote on it.
So, that was question, that was topic one, topic two is, um, I know that you guys, um, approved the, uh, the study conducted for the. Last time I talked to Julie Green, it was they were trying to, scope of study of what they were gonna do, so is there any progress made on that once you can start, you know?
I think that, I don't know about the progress since you've talked to her, but, um, I know that that was what was happening, is they were trying to determine, I haven't heard anything since then, that's not to say that Julie hasn't moved forward, uh, we were supposed to have a planning commission meeting last week, a monthly planning commission meeting, unfortunately with it being fair week, it was pushed back, so I think it's either the next week or we're gonna schedule it for next month, so I think we're gonna know a little bit more about it then, but we can definitely call her, I don't know if Julie's on the line, um, if she can speak to it, or anybody from the planning commission is on the line, if not, we can definitely give her a call and see what the status of that is.
Yeah, she did.
I, I didn't.
Fall off on that to see where it is or?
Sure, 'cause I didn't hear of a, of a change in status, that's not to say that she's not working.
Well, I know they were trying to determine the scope of the study, but I think the start was, is they don't, we don't really know what FEMA exactly wants, so.
Right, and the goalpost keeps moving a little bit, so.
When was the last conversation you had with planning commission?
We can, we can look into that.
Yeah, or do you wanna hang out afterward, we can, we can try and call over there.
We can call. Yeah.
See if we can get an answer.
Okay. That's the FEMA issue in, in the bird, um, another issue in the bird is the dam, which has been pretty quiet of late, um, I had you guys with the Ohio EPA, um, comprehensive study that did not refer to the Mahoney or our area, the river at all, it's all based on the Cuyahoga, which is a much, um, democratic area to, had time to review that or not, but we are watching that very closely because we are definitely really concerned about that. One of those people that, oh, that, that's been being put in public, uh, um, health hazard. That Ohio EPA was part of the bidding process for that landfill and, um, sense that that was gonna occur, and so when they try to tell us now that this is completely safe to do what they're doing, we're, with that, um, we do have a resident who has, we believe, found, um, dams out there that are, um, dangerous, we're gonna try to kind of push through with that and see what's going on, but we wanna let you know that we are still, that's a major issue for our community.
Still no communication or movement with, uh, Fair Board there.
Uh, the.
Oh, it's not Fair Board, the Park Board.
Metro Park Board, I know, they, they don't wanna have conversations, so. Problem, I mean.
Yeah, the only way this is gonna meaningfully be worked out is if both sides can sit down and actually listen to each other.
And, and they, they are placed on a board that, you know, represents the county.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so when they tell us things like, you're not taking my damn out, you're a personal issue when that dam is owned by. Back there, is this, or you're not listening to anything, you've listened to Ohio EPA's project about how they want to, it's all about clean water, when, you know, from ninety-eight to two thousand thirteen, it's had significant changes from, going from ever since eighty-eight, a lot of this were met, um, you know, the part of.
And you guys have heard things from the EPA before that haven't necessarily panned out.
That's the thing, I mean.
And I know, we, we don't need to go down there, and I don't wanna conflate the two issues, but your community knows that, so that's.
It's, that's. You know, it's, it's a common sense thing, if drywall gets broken and wet, it's gonna create hydrogen sulfide, so you put it in a landfill, you don't bubble wrap it, it's not on an umbrella, a fort trader can tell you that that's gonna happen, yet it didn't come up in their thing, so when we say, look, there's not a toxic area that runs around and pulls all that stuff that wasn't the river out, that stuff is in sediment, you're gonna take the ba- the river down, you're exposing a lot of stuff, you know, even just the, the back of North River there, that copper well, they capped that area because that was the best remediation they could do, that's right on the bank of the river, so, yeah, and we're gonna get impacted from that, the Sum Street Dam, 'cause if they take that dam out, that area's gonna get impacted from it, so, it is a major issue in, in the area. And, you know, taking the Sum Street Dam out, right there by where we had a super fun project with the transformer issue, so, you know, it's not just about clean water, if you're gonna invest three million dollars into taking that dam out, yet we have people in our homes, in our township, that has to carry water because it's not drinkable coming out of our closet, we got this only in America, or only in Toma County, or only in Ohio, like, what is that? So, you know, we just have all these issues and it's, I mean, like, plague you guys, a lot of stuff going on, and treat with the next issue of the sewer project, um, I know that they just put in the paper over the weekend, the final issuance of the PTI and the NPDES, the MPU.
MPDES.
So, there's a thirty-day period that you could appeal these decisions to ERAC, so are they not definitely final until they, that thirty days, 'cause my concern is if that's true, then we're gonna miss the August first deadline for that forgiveness law again.
No, I, I got the PTI, I came in yesterday.
Well, they said it was fi- the finals were issued, so both are issued.
Yes, yes.
But people have thirty days to appeal, and I hope nobody appeals these things, but if they have to wait the thirty days, is it good enough what we have?
Well. Well, the WPCLF nominations are normally due to September the first, not August the first, so, um.
David Emner from the Twinsburg.
So, I'll, so I'll get the nomination in and have the PTI in hand and we should max out the points and, um, I'm hoping it'd be the number one project in the state here on this, uh.
I had met with David Emner, the director of the Twinsburg branch, and he said, you know, that's why we didn't get it last time, was, I mean, you, you have to have the actual PTI.
I only had the application in last year, and we had to rush to get that, and that scored me some points, but it didn't max the points.
Well, he said it, but he told me August first was the deadline, that's why I was like, not gonna make it if that.
No, no, it's not August first, they haven't even put out the, uh, invitation for the nominations yet, so, yeah.
We'll make sure that you're.
And that's the one we got, we, we just missed out last year, Yankee Lake got it. Yeah, Yankee Lake got it, Meadowbrook didn't.
Right, and so this is, this year's.
And it's. So, this year's Meadowbrook, they'll only award principal forgiveness to one project per year.
Okay.
It didn't used to be that way, but it, they started last year since they have all that ARP money in that pot now, that they're saying that we're only gonna get one principal forgiveness awarded each government entity, and last year, uh, Yankee Lake scored number one in the state and it got over the million dollars in principal forgiveness, that's why I told you earlier, we need to rush on this, so I don't lose that million.
Right.
But the maximum, uh, principal forgiveness award is four million dollars, and so, since Meadowbrook is gonna be a nomination for about a twelve million dollar project there, I need that four million in principal forgiveness from the state to make it happen, so it should score, if not number one, at least tied for number one in the state, now that I have that PTI and that MPDES permit, it, it's gonna max out the score, so, so it'll be tied for first, and, uh, I already let them know, this is the one project I want the principal forgiveness for, the, the other ones that I turn in, I'll take your zero percent financing on it, I have other grant sources, but I need that four million in the principal forgiveness.
And then I know that they, they granted the PTI, I know that the land, going on that whole issue's not yet.
Yes, we, we've been working with trustees, uh, we sent over the requi- when we got the deed written up, asked them to go ahead and execute to transfer it, and we heard from their attorney that he wants to put some language in the deeds, something to the effect of that if we don't build a treatment plan, it goes back to Warren Township, um. uh, that the property can never be annexed into the city of Warren. He had like four, they had four questions on it. And looking at it and, and talking to Matt Blair, the lawyer, we don't know if you can write that sort of language into a deed, but we're looking at maybe a separate purchase agreement. Where we do make an agreement between the township and the county to go ahead and, uh, uh, agree with them, you know, these terms that we're, of what we're not going to do with the land. And if we do intend to purchase it, build a package plan on it and intend to use it to serve the, the residents of the township. And that we would, uh, I guess in perpetuity, not annex it into the city of Warren, even though I see no reason why the county would annex our package plan into the city of Warren, but they want some assurance that's not going to happen.
The township originally bought that property, they purchased it to prevent
Okay.
To pay for that property. As a resident of the township, I agree that they need to have those stipulations. Cause what if they gave it to me and then something happened, you didn't build it, now we've lost our security blanket there.
Okay.
And, and that's, I mean-
I can understand. And, and I have no objections to any of the, well, I, I don't have in front of me, so I, I can't remember what the four issues are. But nobody in my office had any objections to what you're, what the township's asking for.
I mean, not that it should be an excuse, but if you look back historically, Warren Township's prisons, landfill, drug rehab, I mean, we just keep getting hit. So they, they, the conspiracy theory in the township's alive and well at all the time.
Okay.
And I can't say as I blame them because look what's happened. Landfill was the absolute biggest because that was a common sense thing. No matter how you look at it, the state experts failed our community. That's just, you know, not gonna get over that. It's
Right.
We lost, we lost people that had to move out. I mean, we lost a lot of things with that.
All right. Well, the commissioners in my office, during the next three, four years, looking to invest, uh, excuse me, about twenty-five million bucks into that township, so. Right, just for the, the sanitary sewer system.
I get it, but, you know, like I said, even looking at the, the Ohio EPA is wanting to give them three million dollars to take a dam out, cause it's all about clean water. Well, we have people that can't drink the water coming out of their tap. It's, there's no sense to that in their mind. But I sit and go, what do elderly people do trying to carry water? Go fill Judge's water fire station and carry it into the house? Cause I'm like going, so, you know, it's, and I don't know, maybe thirty, forty years and I can't do it, what am I supposed to do then? You know what I'm saying? Like, there's gonna come a point that it gets to where it's not possible. So what do these elderly people do at that point? And when we've got ten, fifteen thousand dollar water systems on it, and it shows, it's an issue.
Right. And when I did the blueprint project, I did send out interest surveys to, uh, people in, in the Gilmer Street area, on, on that side of the river. And I, and I was really expecting them to, yes, we want water too. But I did not get a lot of good responses out of that.
But you take where I'm at over in Brooklyn, I've got water across the street at one, after I got a car wash, one block down the street, a fire hydrant. I don't have water, but I have sewer.
Okay.
A household of a couple of people pay the same sewer bill this guy next door who has six kids and, you know, his mother-in-law lives in there pays. So like, we're suggesting, like, this just doesn't-
Right. Well, you're a city of Warren sewer customer, right?
Oh, I'm told, yeah.
Brooklyn, okay. Are you a, are you a territory to our package plan out there?
Apparently.
Okay, all right. Then you would be paying a, per, a rate per thou- no, you're paying a well rate.
Light rate, yeah.
You're gonna donate water, okay.
So I pay the same amount as the guy next door, that he's got seven more people now than I do.
Right, yeah.
Like, like I said, the water's right there and we don't have it.
Okay. Well, people can turn in petitions for water service too. And we haven't gotten any petitions from, from that area.
I think part of the problem is, is most of the people in my neighborhood are elderly, with the exception of the guy next door, we don't even have any kids.
Okay.
Wasn't any kids when I moved in there thirty-three years ago. And it was just like, so we got, my son was there and that was it. Like, it didn't expand because of the elderly people that were there.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I think you can understand why we have to stay on a consistent well rate for everyone. If we were trying to do it by household population, how would we be able to monitor that, track that?
Oh, I understand. That's what I'm just saying.
Are we gonna be, you know, oh, you had a baby and, and we're supposed to catch it in the paper and come in there and increase your bill? Or somebody died, somebody go out, it, it would just be a logistical, uh, it, it would, it, I don't think it would be possible to accurately do that. So, and that's why we go through the flat rate for well customers.
Oh, I understand the reason behind not being able to-
Yeah, it, it would just be hard.
But I'm just saying, like, you know, we sit with water that's not drinkable and you have to take all your light clothes close to the laundry mat, cause you can't wash them. It destroys your plumbing.
Right.
And the water is, literally, it's right across the street.
Well, I-
It's less than two hundred feet from me.
Okay. Uh, I, I think you're aware, I had relatives living over there on Hongview. And I remember visiting their house and, and what the water was like. So I'm, I'm familiar with that. Water smell, water and, yes, all the problems associated with it. That's why when I sent out that interest survey, I was surprised that I didn't get more people.
Gilmore's-
Said they wanted the water.
Gilmore's over towards town. I'm right there on Mahoning, so.
Okay. All right. But I, I do know they had the sulfur water in some of the areas I sent the interest surveys. The people just didn't respond well. But if, if somebody wants to get petitions to me, I'd, you know, we could start putting projects together, get the water sent in.
I just, the elderly probably, you know, I'm sure they think I'm so fearful of what, you know, what it is there.
Anything else?
I don't move that one.
Is there a fifth?
Isn't that mine?
No, it's more than that.
Anything else?
Okay, so next week you'll have the answers to all those questions that are still left, um.
Well, we will, um, check with Julie on one of them. Gary, it seems like he's answered.
He's, yeah, he has.
Some of them. And then the, uh, Mr. Masaki, forward that on.
Oh, you know, the only other thing that I heard too in that, in the deed that you sent over for them to sign was that it only required two trustees to sign it. Anything of this magnitude in the township requires all three of them to sign.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Wasn't aware of that.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, I thought it was just the majority. Then there is some sort of-
Yeah, there's things that, that magnitude, like when they purchased it, it had the all three trustees.
Okay. Typically in the county, if you have two signatures, it usually suffices for everything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I wouldn't have been able to do anything in the last, uh, two years.
I know.
I need all, all three.
None of us would be.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think anything in the-
A lot of us wouldn't be here, to be quite frankly, here.
I don't think you're gonna have to attract anyone. Uh, as a matter of fact, the drawings from Meadow Brook, the drawings from Meadow Brook that Smith for the PTI, she wouldn't sign. So we wouldn't even have the PTI submitted, cause she wouldn't sign the drawing, the coverage of the drawings, so.
Well, although we understand your frustration, Karen.
Okay. Well, thank you. That was informational. Anybody else have anything for the greater good? Mr. Masaki, where do we stand on some of these updated lists?
I think I've lost my energy here.
Yeah?
Uh, one little add-on. Um, so we had, um, the last time we had, um, eighteen projects we submitted for legal opinion. And we did get response back on, uh, five of them.
Which ones?
Uh, United Way for two seventy-five, Harriet Upton Taylor up the street here for fifty-eight thousand, Niles Historical for sixty-three, Viana Historical for six, sixty thousand. I, I can give you shit. And Bridgefield Community Foundation, two hundred and sixty-four thousand.
So we did get all those out?
Yes. And then with the issues as to the number of meetings and things that we, you know, had moved, continued, um, there's sort of a, a little bit of a wrinkle. Uh, there was a question as to whether or not these requests here at these workshops are in truly done to the public meeting. And, uh, that in mind, I told, told Tanya that, uh, legal counsel, uh, sent copies in the last one, when she, she brought it to my attention when there was three that were still being submitted. Um, so I put the dates of the workshop or the regular meeting at which they were discussed.
Yeah.
So I forwarded all these to you.
Right.
But, uh, since I see the, she misread the email, meeting dates were discussed and included, could you please provide a copy of the minutes? And I can just include those as well. And then it says here also at the top on urging from, um, hey commissioner, that we'd be prudent to have the minutes for each meet, each request for, before these, for all the eighteen. Well, you know, we, we've tried sometimes to go back and verify and, you know, we were all here. So when we submit the request, we're not submitting them unless we have verification and some we can't find and, I mean, on, on other issues, so they, so I don't submit them. So I don't know, it's, it's the commissioner's call, uh, to decide if you wanna send a copy of the access to the tape of the meeting to legal counsel. I don't know if there's minutes which reflect each and every little project that you're requesting or what you feel is necessary.
I, I think we have it there. It's public, it's on our, it's on our, under the recording.
Send the, send the attorney the recording so that she knows it happened, A, in a public meeting.
Right.
And, and B, that it was discussed, uh, between at least two commissioners that approved her discussion.
And I-
We can't, we can't go through and document-
So, so why, why, why came in fourth?
At three minutes and thirty-three seconds, we discussed that.
Was that we've got those five, those five of the other thirteen have not been responded to. So I'm assuming, I can only play some assumption that not forwarding those minutes or whatever, that maybe that's part of the consideration. I, I can verify.
Well, I mean, if we gave them the, submitted them, and you submitted them to her, I'm sure it was, it came up at one of the meetings we had there.
Yeah.
And I guess moving forward, we can, we can do that better, I guess, for her readiness or whatever, but-
Of kind of written confirmation, I don't know.
And, and I guess, uh, with those ones, um, do you have them?
Well, I have tape, I mean.
I mean, now, do you have which ones they are, the ones there?
Oh, well, yeah.
Because we can just read their names now and then readdress it right now. We're in a meeting right now to move forward again.
At what point?
She has a problem with that.
What? I mean, yeah, that's the problem where you, where you started. Okay, so the submissions, I don't know, some of these could overlap because she, uh, probably legal counsel
Right.
characterizes some of the applications. But we have, um, Bright Energy for two hundred and fifty thousand, and that was done at a regular meeting, I believe, but, but, but Bright Engineering.
I'm good to move that forward at this point.
I'll second that one.
Weathersfield Township, four hundred and forty-seven thousand for a multi-jurisdictional education and workshop development training center.
Good to move that one forward.
I'll second that.
Community Family Outreach Complex, uh, which they referred to as CFOC, which I for recognition purposes, Bishop Heron requesting two hundred and twenty-eight thousand oh thirty point seventy cents.
Move that one forward.
I'll second that.
And we had, um, some of these, some of these will be on here.
That's okay.
But we had Champion Township requesting ten thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars for a generator for the Township Police Building.
Second that forward.
Viana Township requesting twenty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars for-
Radio.
Mark's radios for Viana Township Police.
Second that.
Second to, all right. In motion, whatever.
The St. Davis Township was seeking three hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars for a road widening, ditching. And I think they wanted some improvements to their, to their, um-
Town hall or something.
Town hall.
Part of that. And I thought she, I thought she denied that road part of it already.
Oh, that was the-
That, that was the one I think we paid.
I think it was another one. I don't know. That's probably, yes, about seventy of them, so.
Well, Vernon Burgio was tonight also, but I thought this was, but let's send it forward, cause I know the-
Well, I wasn't submitted until-
The bathroom.
June, so.
Okay.
Yes, you're right. And the, um, City of Cortland was requesting seven hundred and fifty thousand to provide, um, better transmission, improved distribution and quality of public drinking water to the residents of South Line in their application. Remember at the presentation.
Yep.
I'm fine to submit that.
I'll second that. Wait, and these ones, again, we all, we did these already in a, in a public meeting, but just to be double sure.
I know these two are on, but just to double, double check again, uh, United Way requesting two hundred and seventy-five thousand for United For Kids Project to assist many of the low to moderate income children.
But she's already given an, an opinion on that.
Yeah, but I mean, there's still questions as to whether or not they were approved by two of you.
But she gave the opinion. Well-
You got the dates written on those, so.
Yeah, I know, but she still wants, okay. I'll back, I'll approve.
Second.
Go ahead.
Hold the vote o'clock. If Mr. Masaki will present Ms. Amy with, uh, these, these things, and she will make sure they're at the end of her minutes for today's meeting.
Yeah, I, I get it.
Right, right, right.
Uh, and Harriet Upton Taylor Association for fifty-eight thousand eight twenty-nine.
I'm good to proceed.
Second that.
And Niles Historical Society for sixty-three thousand oh fifty.
Will proceed.
Second that.
Uh, we have the, uh, Viana Historical Society for sixty thousand for renovation.
Second proceed.
Second that.
We had Niles where, City of Niles was requesting sixty thousand towards the valve replacement by, uh, drinking water to half the city of Niles.
Good to proceed.
Second that.
And of course, it happened on here, but we'll repeat it again. Bridgefield Community Foundation requesting two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars for the Bridgefield African American Community Project.
Proceed. And also, also, uh, the Kinsman Project, the, the one that they resubmitted with the sidewalks. I know they had one that was denied. But they have a new one they submitted, uh, through the portal. I, I'd like to proceed with that one as well.
Second that. And then Bezetta Township, I didn't hear that one on there.
Oh, yes. Well, yeah, on, on six twenty-seven, you, you authorized Bezetta, so we would, you'd reaffirm that Bezetta Township request, that was for, I have to get out.
There's a word project, some sort of.
For roadway.
Is that the one?
Do you find that? And I'll, I'll read this while we're looking for that.
The town's trustees.
Okay.
It's probably better to read the word, baby.
Yeah, that is, that is.
By Mosquito Lake, Trumbull County Fair.
Any amount of what?
And Bezetta Township Police Department location, three hundred thousand.
Good to proceed.
Second that.
At the beginning of the meeting for the heritage train thing? Is that something different?
No, that was, that was yours, yeah.
She already, she's already noted that for the minutes.
Yeah.
We're doing these procedural gymnastics here.
You're good at them, mom.
Okay, there we got five on this sheet here, so I need some water here.
Uh, there's also one here for Comfort Historical Society. McBride House, it says not signed. Is that something?
Oh, that means the application wasn't signed.
So we need to kick that back, do you sign or not?
Well, oh, yeah, let's, we don't wanna do, let's get in, let's get back to this.
Okay.
Okay, so we have the Animal Welfare League.
No.
Was requesting two hundred and fifty thousand.
I, I'm good to proceed with that.
Basically to assist the rapidly growing humane, humane investigation department.
They gave, they gave a presentation on that, yeah.
Second that.
And Bristol Township Trustees were requesting sixteen thousand one hundred for Bristol Township Heart Development Project.
Very reasonable, huh?
Forward.
Yep, second that.
And you have the, um, Downbeat Musical Arts Center, registered as a nonprofit, was seeking a total of fifty-nine thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-three cents, of which the city has already indicated a willingness to fund fifty percent.
Right.
If Trumbull County funds our, we're gonna spend it twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventeen.
We can move it forward.
And second that.
And Viana Historical Society, three thousand to restore headstones and monuments. It's, it's a different one. In the cemetery and provides space walking paths.
Fine to proceed.
And Middle Ridge Historical Society requesting twenty thousand for the Black Band Horror Memorial and History Walk. In memory of mining, twenty thousand.
Second. With these, there was some talk, some discussion, some banner about why submit them all forward and waste the lawyer's time if we're not gonna do them. I think each and every request that comes in, if the trustees, people put the effort to put them in there, I think we need to really look at all of them and, and give them deep consideration.
Yep.
But I wanna know if they're legal first, cause I don't wanna waste our time of, of approving it to move it forward, then she's gotta do legal, and then we have to go through it all over again.
Yeah.
So I think the money expended on her part, to see if it's legal or not, is worth the effort.
Agreed. And I think all these projects- Agreed, and I think all these projects, just about all of them, I think ninety-nine point nine percent of them are all very valid and, um.
And then just, I mean, now, of course, I don't wanna fund them all, what they're asking.
Right.
But we at least need to know what qualifies of that, and that helps us, help us narrow it down.
And, uh, Mr. Sutter, or, I- I- I kinda think he's a trustee in Brookfield.
He is.
He's been, uh, wanting to know if anything has been moved forward on his, his request.
That's for the drainage improvement?
Yes.
That's a big ticket, isn't it?
Yeah, it was like four hundred plus. Red, that should never have been, there we go.
That's the Valley View area?
Yes. Brookfield Township Trustees are asking for four hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty cents for the Valley View Stormwater Project. For runoff due to undersized pipe which can't be handled, uh, handle the water on properties on Crestwood Drive, Wildwood Drive, Brookfield.
More of a project for the highway engineer though?
Um, that's something for you folks to decide, you don't have to do it today.
Yeah, I'm gonna wait on that one to do more research.
Okay, hi.
Okay, this is, yeah, I mentioned this to you.
Yes.
Crestwood Drive, Wildwood Drive, these would be township roads, so I- I can see why the trustees would have to build it, because they are in charge of the infrastructure there. That Valley View neighborhood, I also, we also have a huge problem out there of sewers, sanitary sewers backing up. And it's, and it's because a lot of the storm water is connected into our sanitary.
All right, well, could you check that out for the Commissioners, to see what impact that has and maybe bring more.
Let them make the decision a little bit.
No, I, I.
Well, could be, bring more relevance to the application.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct.
If- if they can help, help with better stormwater control, maybe it would help with the sanitary, there wouldn't be as much going in. But primary culprit out there is the, the footer drains are tied into our sanitary, I don't, I don't care what they do with the stormwater project, and the footer drains are still gonna come into the sanitary.
That wouldn't change that.
Yeah, th- this is, there are two neighborhoods in this county that are worse for backup, it's this one and the one out in Weathersfield. And, uh, I was hoping there, uh, there would be another project I could do to, for I and I, especially in these two areas, to go disconnect those footer drains. Get them connected into a storm sewer somewhere. And, uh, but it looks like ARP funds are depleted to such an extent that residents put in another application for something like. But I mean, to get that stormwater out of this neighborhood is something that's very necessary for my.
Just to be clear, that wouldn't get the stormwater out of this neighborhood.
No. But it would give better conduit of storm water in the event it, it wasn't able to go in there and connect those footer drains.
Oh, I guess. I guess.
If I disconnect footer drain, I gotta put it into a storm sewer somewhere, I don't know the condition of those storm sewers, if this is already done, or, or, you know, a step ahead.
Yeah, we've, we've got enough, uh, I think we, Tanya's gonna have her hands full.
Yeah, we'd like to do more if we could, because we're gonna sink our teeth in these now, see how much we wanna fund.
Right.
If we get, if we get established one of our workshops a month, um, that we dedicate more time after the regular meeting, continue on with the regular, you know, meeting. But then just do ARPA stuff after, they take the conclusion of the meeting.
Yep, I, I.
Take them one by one, discuss them, and then make the agenda items after that.
Yep, we do have one more, and I know, I know this has been discussed either at our meeting here with Harbor, East Gate. And we couldn't find it going through, through the minutes, and then we, we went through the, the.
Is that broadband?
Yes, fifty thousand.
That's for broadband coordinator?
Uh, it's broadband identification coordinator, fifty thousand for East Gate, so, so I even talked to Nick Coggins on it and said. Recall the Commissioners authorizing us to proceed for a legal opinion, and I, I could not find anything.
We did not, yeah. No, but I thi- I think we deal with this, I met last week with a girl from, from East Gate.
Well, I've been with her, yes. Okay.
She explained it a little more in detail to me.
Okay.
And opened my eyes up to why they're requesting this and the need for this, so.
I- I'd like to talk to East Gate about it, because I haven't about this position, because it'd be, it'd be a brand new position.
Okay. Oh, I don't really, yeah, okay.
The coordinator position.
Oh, it's an actual position, yes.
I don't think so, that's what you're funding. Let me, let me talk to East Gate, can I take that into question?
I feel like I take that under the. Yeah, okay, good.
Let me, I have a question, maybe, but I'm, on behalf of Hubbard Township, because I don't know if we've been denied or not, but I didn't hear us in there with the Salt Don Project. Hubbard Township Trustees. I know we've ordered that along.
No, 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 uh, well, I, it's on here.
I just don't know whether it's been denied or, or if they take it back to the trustees.
It was a, a large ticket, I believe.
Two, two thirty-some.
Uh, let me find you it again.
Salt Don. We've been inundated with requests there. Yeah. I didn't come for that reason, I just figured why it's there, you know?
While we're doing it, let's, let's get it out there.
Yep.
Well, I got, on, on March twentieth, just submitted Hubbard Township for eight hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred thousand of demolished, twenty unfit and unsound structures, two hundred and four thousand. Ninety dollars and fifty cents to repair and repay five township roads, two hundred and ten thousand to build the EPA required salt storage, it was all part of that request, that ask.
Will they separate those, or i- if one's denied, or do you need to resubmit?
Well.
In other words, it's a larger amount.
She'll break them down. She'll break them down into the three, if there's three separate asks in there, she'll break it down into this one, this part, there's no, this part's no, this part's yes, or.
So, it hasn't been denied, they're just still what you're.
It hasn't been submitted, yes.
Oh, it's not.
Let's submit that forward there, because Salt Don wanted.
We can submit. Although I think at least one of those will be denied.
Other road, no.
Yeah, I mean, we probably shoot for the moon and see what's, what's available and what you can, just being honest.
And, um, I, I don't have the, I, I totalize those eighteen requests on another sheet in my office. Uh, so if we start totaling up all the monies, we're, we are utilizing a fairly good portion of our, the eight million.
And I would like to set aside, as I mentioned earlier, I mean, we haven't done that for broadband.
Correct, I know what.
At least, you know, the neighborhood, one or two million is full.
I mean, from, from our last meeting, we, we still said.
So, I mean, yeah.
You know, there's roughly three, if we would, if we did half of what was left at the time, three hundred thousand per township, and we've spent very, very little of that as of yet. So, that should all still be there, and the other seven and a half million, on the other side, we've done a couple of things, but the broadband, the, the, uh, community center things, things like that. You know, would, would come out of that other half.
Well, I'll, I'll give you the totals, if I can.
Thank you.
But I mean, if you, um.
But I know we haven't, we haven't even sunk our teeth.
There are a lot, there's a lot of significant, uh, called allocation. Difficult to say to, to a direct dollar, for example, we have two million dollars for the Ween demolition, I, we don't know, we don't know what that's going to be.
We don't know what that is.
Right.
Worst case scenario, probably two million.
I don't know, I mean, so, so you have a lot of allocation, so, but I mean, you say you're.
But we had a good solid fifteen million left when we had those two meetings, when we went line by line, at that time, we did, that's sitting there, that was unallocated, you had the.
Well, the reason I asked for seven hundred, seven million, um, so.
Right.
I'm saying, you, you, it's starting to get to where you really need to consider what you wanna fund.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, and we haven't touched Townships yet, and I'm gonna stick by that three hundred thousand per township and fight like hell for it before we do one more water project or anything else that's gonna, you know, the Townships are gonna get their seats at the table first.
Yeah. That's your call to make, yeah. Okay.
Jim, I did have one question about the Diverging Diamonds interchange, I think we asked for like a hundred and sixteen, I know it was set, am I?
Yes.
And, uh, we, we sent an agreement to ODOT, ODOT needs to sign an agreement saying that they are going to also meet the re- the ARP requirement in the way that they spend it.
We got it approved.
Right.
And they have.
And that's what their lawyers right now, and they're reviewing that, and hopefully they'll, they'll, they'll sign it and they'll be okay.
Right, okay, it becomes a little problematic, even for small grants. That's one of the things, the legal counsel and I discussed, we record them. Yes, if it's a ten thousand dollar grant that Champion gets approved for, they have to sign an eight-page ARPA agreement since they're a sub-recipient.
Yeah. Okay. Right.
And since, if the county gets the money directly and contracts, we don't have to sign that. But if we have a third party as a recipient contracting with someone else, we have to get a sub-recipient agreement. So, those would ultimately have to be monitored as well. So, it, the process is quite lengthy and complicated and has, uh, roots to go on for extended periods of time, of this cautionary. That's one of the things, because I even said, I said, this is a state of Ohio agency, why wouldn't we need a sub-recipient? ODOT, because ODOT's hiring contractors. If ODOT was doing the work themselves, the county was writing a check, then you wouldn't need that agreement.
Right.
And I, I guess that's probably common than we think, but. I saw your emails, it's been submitted to the state, the state's gonna.
Right.
And all those, all those agreements, time factors, as far as, by the time it's passed by the Commissioners, printed on the journals. Half has attempts to con- see the contact person on that agreement, I think it's Township Trustees or various boards. Uh, I certainly, we have a question right now, because the, um, Corbin Community Foundation is part of a, I have that paper, but I have it in my office. We're, um, monitored out of Western Pennsylvania in Ohio, so when we send it to the people who's signing the application, actual W nine.
Right, to a different name, those are on the application.
Not, not different organization, and we're trying to figure that out right now. So, when they call back, I can say, where's, what's happening, like, well, we didn't, not our fault.
Right.
Uh, we're, we're trying to get to people who, who is on the W, who, who are on the W nine agency and organization. So, if that's the case, then maybe it has to be bought.
Right, I understand that.
People work has to match up. You're, you're, you're seven months here, if appropriation is off by thirty-five cents, get an amendment.
Correct.
Yes.
But that's okay, because that has to match up.
Right, that's right.
Well, it was a good discussion, so.
Okay, let's get those to Tanya, and hopefully, maybe two weeks from today, we can go and start writing some, some agenda items. I know there are people waiting, patient.
Well, we have, yeah, the other thing was, is for today, that's why we brought up the ones that were, were approved, but we can verify to her from today's, again. That, that those were in fact, um, for the record, I mean, you need to decide, it can't be for tomorrow, but for maybe the next week, those five items.
Those five.
These five items were, the amounts you wanna fund.
Yeah.
Right.
And you folks can make that determination.
Let's put those five on for next week's workshop, then.
Yeah.
At, at, at those approved abouts.
Yeah, let's do those.
Okay.
Start with those five, and then two weeks after that, we'll go to the next batch that gets us.
Okay, very good.
Anything else for the greater good? On a relatively short agenda, we had a relatively long meeting. So, I think we, uh, turned over every rock and covered the bases and. Okay, entertain a motion, make a motion adjourned, second.
Mr. Cancel the Mayflower.
Yes.
This is away.